All righty, first of all, I want to say good evening to everyone that's here today. This is where there is nothing to report out from, excuse me, we're going to continue study session following the city council meeting, so we'll continue. At this point, I'd like to open up the Baldwin Park City Council regular meeting. Today is August the 6th, 2014, the time is 7:25. Excuse us that we ran a little late from our study session. So at this point, I'm going to ask Pastor Jackson, he could lead us in an invocation, followed by the flags, Luke. So I will ask all those that are able to stand to please do so at this time. Thank you.
Heavenly Father, we come before you right now in the name of the Lord, giving you thanks for Baldwin Park, thank you for the city council and the school district, the police department, Lord, and giving them all wisdom and knowledge and understanding in how to run the city. There's much turmoil around the world, Lord, and wars and rumors of wars that are taking place. But we asking you, Lord, and putting your hand on this nation, Lord, and keeping it and protecting it. We asking you to put your hand on a city and keeping it and protecting it. And those that dwell within the city, the jobs, the school district, Lord God, the teenagers that's running the streets, Lord God, and helping them along their way, Lord God, and breaking down gangs and shooting and unnecessary violence within our city, that we can have a perfect city. And so we just thank you, Lord God, for everyone working together and bringing the city into unity and in one accord and a peaceful city. In the name of the Lord, we pray, amen.
Amen, thank you. This one will face the flag. Put your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every justice for all. Thank you very much, everyone that's here. Want to just real quick acknowledge the former council member, former mayor, city of West Covina, Ben Wong, thank you for being here. Also, also the former chief Frank Wills, thank you very much for being here, chief, as well. All righty, at this point, council members have any announcements?
Just really quickly, if you don't mind. I just wanted to thank the staff really and the Baldwin Park Police for putting together such an amazing national night out yesterday. It was really amazing, yes. In particular, I want to point out that they were giving out approximately 100 backpacks to kids that were in need, and it was a well-coordinated effort. They really reached out to the schools and asked teachers, you know, who they knew were low-income and needed the backpacks. So thank you so much for doing that, I really appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, council member Susan Rubio. All right, I'm, excuse me, sorry about that, our city clerk or city treasurer will be taking roll call. Thank you.
Before I take roll call, I would like to welcome our new superintendent from our school, Mr. Sevillano.
Mr. Sevillano, stand out so everyone gets to see you, yes.
Oh yeah, that's right, thank you.
Yeah, there you are. And thank you so much for bringing your staff as well and participating last night. It was a really, like I said, well-coordinated effort, so thank you for joining us.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Also, the manager for Valley County Water and the directors, Alfonso Contreras and Margarita Vargas.
Oh, okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. So with that, good evening, everyone. Buenas noches a todos. Councilmember Cruz Baca, here. Councilmember Monica Garcia, here. Councilmember Susan Rubio Hernandez, present. Mayor Paten Ricardo Pacheco, present. Mayor Manuel Lozano, present.
Thank you very much, appreciate that, Maria Contreras. All right, at this point, we're going to go on the proclamation and also the presentation we have through them, but I'm going to go on the first one, being that we have our new CEO here, Mr. Shannon Yahtzee. So read a little bio on his behalf, which reads, "Mr. Shannon Yahtzee was born in Whittier, California, and has been a resident of the San Gabriel Valley for most of his life. In his early years, Mr. Yahtzee worked as a various aspects of construction industry in the family business. He also attended Cal Poly University in Pomona, where he obtained his bachelor's of science degree in civil engineering, and subsequently obtained his state registration as a California professional engineer. Mr. Yahtzee then served about eight years with the public-private partnership firm of Weldon, excuse me, Associates out of their city of industry office, providing consulting services to various cities and counties throughout the area. He then joined the city of West Covina and became their public works director. During this time, he led West Covina to a leader in energy efficiency saving and the city's million-dollar energy costs. He also was responsible for managing and building over $100 million in improvements to the city's parks, streets, facilities, landscaping, and infrastructure. After almost 18 years in West Covina, Mr. Yahtzee says he is delighted to join and lead the executive team in the city of Baldwin Park. Shannon and his wife Lisa, are they here? Are your families here? Oh, awesome, thank you. If you could please stand, okay. Shannon, his last Lisa, Lisa have been married for almost 24 years and have two beautiful daughters, Emily and Sarah. Lisa teaches second grade for Bonita Unified School District. Emily will be entering Cal Poly Pomona, hey, just like Dad, okay? Honors college and fall to study pre-vet animal science. And Sarah will be a senior at Bonita High School on the varsity volleyball team. Shannon brings with him a strong background in efficiency, government leadership, and a commitment to high standards for customer service. So we really appreciate that, having your husband, your dad's here, your dad here, and we're looking forward, and we know he's going to do good and move for Baldwin, City Baldwin Park in the right direction. Thank you very much for being here." So at this point, I'm going to ask him to stand, council members are going to stand here as I read the oath of office.
I'll come with family.
Yes, well, have the family come up here, yes, absolutely. Come on up here. I'm going to, I'm going to cut it in pieces for you. I totally stay here to know it all at one time, all righty.
Acknowledge my parents up here, Ray and Judy.
Awesome, awesome.
From Whittier, California, and raised also a volunteer with the Baldwin Park CHP Senior Program.
Awesome.
And I do want to thank all of the friends and colleagues from West Covina that are here. You guys could all raise your hands, thank you.
All righty.
All righty, what, we'll have your wife stand right next to you. Have the family stand right next to you, all righty. At this point, I'm going to ask you to please raise your right hand and repeat after I, state your name.
I, Shannon Yahtzee.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the State of California.
To the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will, well and faithfully.
That I will and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
About which I am about to enter.
Congratulations, CEO.
Again, I just want to thank my family for being here and supporting me and my parents and, you know, everybody that's come here to support me, thank you.
Thank you. Let's get a picture with everyone. Family here.
This is the first day you're...
All righty. Come on in. Yes, 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 yes.
Take this camera first, one, two, and hold it, one more. Last one. Now this camera.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you, thank you for being here, pleasure, thank you very much, thank you.
Welcome to even.
My wife.
Here you go.
Oh, here we go.
No.
Yes, he has.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Oh, yes.
today as well. All right, at this point, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public commi... No, 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 let me get back. That's right, forgot. All righty, okay, at this point, we have the plaque presentation, and I'll go up to the other one, too. Daniela, San Gabriel Valley Conservation Corp. for celebrating their 10th year anniversary, and council member Susan Rubio will be doing the presentation, thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to invite Danny and his wife to come up here, please.
All right, Danny.
So as he comes up here, I'm going to read his bio. Danny Huahaka is responsible for the San Gabriel Valley Conservation Corp., and they're celebrating their 10th year anniversary, so I'm going to read their bio while they come up. "The mission of the San Gabriel Valley Conservation Corp. is to develop and transform disadvantaged youth in the San Gabriel Valley by providing academic, vocational, and leadership development while also employing them to provide valuable services to their communities and their natural environment. San Gabriel Valley Conservation Corp. targets youth ages 16 to 25 who are disengaged from school and work. Most of these youth have experiences, have experienced significant obstacles in life and are at risk of adjudication, and have attained little success in traditional schooling or employment. San Gabriel Valley Conservation Corp. is an intensive program that helps disadvantaged youth develop the motivation, self-confidence, work skills, and education necessary to take advantage of opportunities in life. Guided by adult leaders who service mentors, role models, technical trainers, and supervisors, the participants work in a crew of five to 10 to rebuild or revitalize blighted areas in their communities, usually areas of low income. To accomplish their mission, they emphasize the interdependence of education and work and address the individual needs of socially, educationally, and economically disadvantaged youth. So with that, I want to invite him to, so we can present him with the plaque, so come up here, Danny." And I was at their presentation, and it was well-attended, I mean, he had, you know, our former Secretary of Labor, Hilda Solis, Congresswoman Grace Napolitano, our Assembly Member, and he has really come a long way in working with all of the elected officials in this region, and if I'm correct, Hilda Solis helped him build this San Gabriel Valley Conservation Corp., so we want to thank her as well.
Mayor, I also want to mention that Danny Huahaka has been a wonderful partner to the city of Baldwin Park, San Gabriel Valley Conservation Corp. We partnered with them a few years ago, actually, to do a job training program here, and his kids and your program has been part of our city ever since. So we definitely want to recognize, you know, you for being a partner to us and providing that leadership here in our community, so thank you.
So the plaque reads, "In recognition of your 10th anniversary celebration, the city of Baldwin Park wishes you continued success and thank you for the unending dedication to give the youth, participants, and staff to our community." So thank you so much, and I know that he also participated in our first Arbor Day celebration. He's helped rehab a few homes in the community, and he's currently working with us to see how we can plant 400 trees. So once again, please, let's give him a big round of applause, thank you.
Congratulations, let's get him here, guys. Yes, let's bring him up here. We'll have you say some words, go ahead, say some more time.
Well, I accept this, it's in my name, but really, it shouldn't be the name of all the staff and the participants in the program that have really made the program for the last 10 years. It wasn't me by myself, it just had my name, but it should be the Conservation Corp. But I was noticing you have item number three today, and hopefully, we just finished a big park in Almani, Lambert Park, looking forward to maybe do some work on Walnut Creek Park. I noticed number three on your agenda today, so hopefully, you'll choose us to do the work.
One, two, and hold it. One last one.
Danny?
Danny? Danny Carrillo?
I want to pick this.
I'm going to make it.
I'll try Susan on.
It's wrong, they're too beautiful.
While we're waiting, we want to welcome our librarian, Rafael Gonzalez, and Amanda, and everybody that is here.
We also have some of our commissioners. Joanna Valenzuela.
Joanna Valenzuela, sorry.
Planning Commissioner. Mr. Rios, Mr. Luna.
Everybody.
Our police officers.
Anira. Margarita Vargas is back there. George from the VP Griller.
Mr. Tuttle.
And our waste management.
Mayor, I also like to announce the grand reopening ceremony for the Barnes Park Improvement, which is on Thursday, tomorrow, August 7th, from 6:30 PM. 7:30 PM, we'll have social refreshments, hors d'oeuvres, and at 8:00 PM, we're going to have a movie featuring the Lego Movie. So hopefully, everybody can come out there and join us. We have a new park, we renovated it, a lot of new splash water effects out there, so hopefully, all of you can come in and bring your bathing suits, you can all get wet also, all right? Hope to see you out there. Thank you.
Mayor, I have one more comment, if I may. I just want, Manny Carrillo, can you please just pass on to staff? Thank you so much for the 5K. It was so well-attended, I mean, people from all over, to Mecula, we have people from Belgium, I believe, and all these countries coming over, so that was really nice to see. So thank you, and thank everyone that was involved in putting it together, it was very successful, thank you.
Yes, that is true.
Mayor, I also would like to say happy birthday to our upcoming senior citizen, Cruz Baca.
Oh, okay, we're going to have to...
Birthday's going to be Friday.
Wait, hold on, when is, when is your birthday?
Tomorrow, oh, no, Friday.
This Friday?
Yes.
Okay, at the end of the meeting, we're going to sing happy birthday to you, okay? Don't worry, I'm right behind you.
She's joining the ranks.
All righty. Okay. All right, he's going to have a nice little discount over at Denny's. All righty, all right, so at this point, we do have one more, one last presentation. Oh, here we go. Okay, so the last presentation that we have is the Upper San Gabriel Valley Municipal Water District PowerPoint, so thank you very much. Hello, how are you?
Hi, hello, good evening, Mayor Lozano and council. Patty Cortez from the Upper San Gabriel Valley Municipal Water District. I'm here this evening to introduce to you a new water conservation challenge that Upper District has put together. As you know, we're currently in one of the most historically severe droughts in California, and what we're trying to do at Upper District is just create a new way to kind of engage our cities and really help us be a partner in spreading that message out to our residents. So, a little bit about Upper District, I know most of you are familiar with this. We're a special district that was formed in 1960. We service 144 square miles, which includes 18 cities in the San Gabriel Valley. We are a member agency to the Metropolitan Water District, and we provide supplemental water to the San Gabriel Valley communities. And below here, you'll see the directors that make up Upper District, and as you know, you are all represented by Director Brian Urias. So a little bit about the Upper San Gabriel Valley, sorry, the San Gabriel Valley Water Smart City Challenge, you have packets in front of you. This program was approved by the Board of Directors in January of 2014. It's part of our outreach strategy for the year. It is available to all 18 cities in Upper District service territory, and it's to engage cities to lead by example during the California drought, and also to promote water conservation and to help meet the governor's call for a 20% impersonal reduction. Again, just a little bit about some of the goals. What we are also trying to do is to promote water conservation as a way of life, that's kind of been the tagline at Upper District, and also to promote water rebates for businesses and residents through SoCalWaterSmart.com. We have mentioned this website a little bit to you before, it is the site that Metropolitan Water District operates for water rebates, and earlier in the year, Metropolitan doubled their budget for rebates, so a lot of the rebates have doubled, and there's a lot of great savings for our residents to utilize. And also to adopt city policies that will contribute to the overall sustainability of the San Gabriel Valley watershed. A little bit about the timeline, info packets were mailed out to all city managers in June. Applications to complete and be a part of the challenge need to be submitted to Upper District by April 30th, and the award for doing this, which the cities would have to meet eight out of 12 requirements, would be that the first three cities would receive a $50,000 grant towards a sustainable watershed project, and that could be anything for a recycled water project, California-friendly landscape demo project, or a stormwater project. Also, you will receive the commemorative San Gabriel Valley Water Smart City seal and be the first three cities in the San Gabriel to attain this rank. I'm going to go quickly over some of the challenge requirements, as I said, you have that in your packet before you. When we created this challenge, we basically looked at all the programs that Upper District is currently offering to cities, and we've kind of repackaged them together, and we've also gotten a little bit creative with it. There are 12 requirements, the city's required to complete eight of them. There is one challenge that is required, and that is, the city must obtain the highest rebate dollars per capita through SoCalWaterSmart.com. Again, this is that rebate site, we are able to track this, so if you do want to participate and you are part of the program, we will be providing you with updates as we go through the year, so that you'll know where you are throughout the process. A couple of the requirements is, one, to adopt a low-impact stormwater ordinance, we've provided with a sample ordinance in your packet. You can host a water-efficient landscape class for your residents, this is something that is offered free through Upper District as part of being a member agency for Metropolitan Water District. And also, to help us implement really the message of conserving water. We've kind of highlighted the campaigns of Save Our Water, The Californians Don't Waste, and then also SoCalWaterSmart for water rebates. All of this is available online, we put together a toolkit with messaging points, sample ads that you're more than willing to use, it's just really an opportunity to get that message out. There is an education component to it, through Upper District, we offer tours, we offer Water 101, and then there's also the 2014 San Gabriel Valley Water Forum, which this year will be held on October 2nd, and it will focus on drought and emergency preparedness. So what we're encouraging is that we have two council members and a city staff to come out to one of these events within the coming year. And again, like I said, the final requirement would be to obtain the highest rebate dollars on SoCalWaterSmart, and encourage the city to look it over and to consider being a part of it, and that's it.
Thank you. Let me ask a question, because it's huge, I mean, how many residents are totally, you guys close to what?
How many?
How many combines, I know the amount of cities, how many is the population? It's probably huge.
Little under a million.
Really? Wow, that's incredible, I didn't realize it went all the way down to South Pasadena.
Yes.
Wow, all righty. Well, thank you very much for this, and of course, biggest thing right now is the water, so education is the best thing, and I think you provided us with a lot of information here. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions? Thank you for the presentation, thank you very much. All righty. All righty, so at this point, I will now open up public communication, anyone wishing to speak, you have approximately three minutes. Good evening, everyone.
I talked about water last time. I want to talk about the unemployment office, because that touches a lot of people in this room, how they abuse the people they're supposed to serve. A friend of mine is dealing with them, they say to be available for their call, otherwise they'll deny you. Last Thursday, we waited for a call that never came. Who's watching them? They mix up the information that he sent them, they send it back, as the last employer was LA Unified, they're on Baldry Drive, but they have a P.O. box in Oakland, California. Why would Los Angeles School District have a P.O. box in Oakland, California? I mean, what's going on with these people? And it affects everybody in here in some way. I know Ricardo Pacheco has things here about the high unemployment here, but what about the abuse of the people? They've got this questionnaire, I didn't get a copy made today, I'll bring it with me next time, along with the other documents, how they had phantom income for a year ago for this person, if he had income in July, August, and September of 2013, why would they pay the claim till the end until it ran out in January 2014? They don't, they would have cut him off, but yet there's phantom income there. Something's wrong somewhere. Ed Hernandez or the people in the legislature need to get off their backsides and do something about to protect these people from being abused. The minorities, I don't know how they'd fill out a questionnaire like that. You almost need a city attorney to go through step by step to answer those questions, are they asking this, or are they asking that? I don't, and it's putting a burden on everything. These people are going to end up on the street, some are going to lose their apartments, they're going to end up in motels with their kids, because the unemployment office is denying them the benefits they're entitled to. Nobody's looking out for anybody here. The abuse, it's out-and-out abuse. It borders on racism, amongst other things. I feel it's more like a condition of RICO or something like that, it's a criminal organization. They're denying these people their benefits when they're clearly entitled, and they're mixing up all the information, and then they're, I'm waiting for the denial letter to come so I can decide whether I'm going to sue. I have to talk to the city attorney, maybe he can steer me in the direction that way, so I can find out who handles EDD litigation against the State of California. Because this affects everybody, it affects the food banks, it affects everything, because these people aren't doing what they're supposed to be doing, paying the benefits that the people are entitled to. They mix up the information, they, they don't do what they're supposed to do. And everybody in here, a lot of people in the city are having to help people with food and gas and this and that, because they're not getting the money that they need to get to look for a job.
Thomas, you have three minutes.
Can I have just a little, one more?
All right, thank you very much.
If you call, you don't get through, and by the time you do, you're spending days and days and days trying to get through.
Thank you, Thomas, nice seeing you.
I tried to do it fast, I'll have the letter next time.
All right, thanks, buddy.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, all right, thank you, good evening. Oh, Linda, well, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Linda Noriega, General Manager, Valley County Water District. It was brought to my attention that the city council, I believe, requested some information concerning the drought and how the drought would, in fact, affect some of the constituency and the residency within the city of Baldwin Park. I'm here just to touch on that a little bit and to explain what the district has taken as far as actions concerned with regards to the drought and the water supply conditions. As everyone, I'm sure, is probably aware, on July 15th, 2014, the State Water Resources Control Board enacted an emergency regulation and adopted a resolution that puts some restrictions on what outdoor potable water use could be used for. This regulation is estimated to be in effect for approximately 270 days. as far as actions concerned with regards to the drought and the water supply conditions. As everyone I'm sure is probably aware, on July 15, 2014, the State Water Resources Control Board enacted an emergency regulation and adopted a resolution that puts some restrictions on what outdoor potable water use could be used for. This regulation is estimated to be in effect for approximately 270 days, which would put us at about the April 2015 mark. It's about nine months from now, at which time the state board will look at the information that they have, see if the conditions have improved, and either extend the time limit on those restrictions or rescind the resolution. In response to the call for action by the State Water Resources Control Board, on July 28th, the Valley County Water District Board of Directors adopted and declared a Stage One Water Supply Emergency. And with that, there are restrictions that we are going to start imposing on our water consumers within the district. As you know, Baldwin Park is served by a number of water agencies, San Gabriel Valley Water Company, and then also Valley View Mutual Water Company, and then Valley County Water District. So these regulations that we've put in place and are going to impose will only affect those Valley County Water District residents. If there's a resident outside of that, they would have to contact their local water purveyor. But most of the restrictions come with outdoor water use and that being, we are requesting and going to be enforcing that our residents do not water down or clean any type of hardscape that they have, sidewalks, driveways, anything of that nature, that would be considered a waste of water. So we're asking them not to do that and we will be enforcing that. Using a handheld garden hose nozzle with a positive automatic shut-off valve if they're washing their cars. At home, washing a motor vehicle is not prohibited, they can do that, they just need to make sure that they have the hose attachment. Cleaning, filling, or maintaining water levels in decorative fountains, we're asking that they not do that and not use those fountains if they do not have a recirculating system installed, which pretty much means that the water's not being conserved or recycled through the system, that it's just being used and then put in the waste stream. Repairing leaks as soon as they're detected or within at least 72 hours of being notified that there is a leak. And then prohibiting watering outdoors between the hours of 9:00 AM and 6:00 PM. So those hours are prohibited, anytime before 9:00 AM is okay, anytime after 6:00 PM would be okay. And then prohibiting the runoff of irrigation. That's a huge concern for a lot of the district residents as well as some of the cities that we serve. We want to make sure that the irrigation that is taking place is actually irrigating the landscape and not irrigating the hardscape. I do want to give thanks to Mr. Daniel Wall. I was able to meet with him and speak with him regarding some of the items that we had with respect to the water emergency and then also speak with him about some of the irrigation concerns that we've received from our consumers. If you get questions and you need information or you need more details, please refer them to Valley County Water District, we're more than happy to help them. The spirit of our ordinance and of our resolution is to educate our consumers about water conservation and that's what we're about. We would rather be doing that than imposing some sort of fine. I know there's been concerns about a $500 fine potentially being imposed. That's the maximum that the State Water Resources Control Board has provided authority for us to collect. At this point, our resolution only suggests that we collect anywhere between $25 and $100, but that would be for repeat offenders. We are more about educating the consumer and the residents about water conservation, so please, if you need additional information, do not hesitate to call me. I will come, speak to your residents at forums or whatever other type of events that you have, and if they have concerns, please have them call the district, we're more than happy to help. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Real quick, I want to make certain that we coordinate this with the NOW, the city newsletter, so that it goes out to all the residents so that they're informed and educated, and what you just shared with us, it's important. Go ahead, what were you going to say?
We are going to be providing a letter. I did provide all of the material that we have to date to Mr. Daniel Wall and one of them was a press release and that is going to be sent over to the Baldwin Park now, so we're hoping that they would publish that.
Okay.
And then we also will be sending a direct mailer notification to all the residents. Mr. Wall has a copy of that in case someone comes to the city and says, "I got this, what does it mean?" At least he knows what it looks like and he has seen it. But please, direct them to us if they have any other questions.
Alright, thank you. Thank you very much, Linda.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Alright, moving along with public communication. Okay, we have Al Contrares, Upper San Gabriel Valley. Good evening.
Valley County Water.
Oh, Valley County, that's right, okay.
Members of the council. Just a couple more additions that I want to add since we're in the subject of water. Right now, please note that our Baldwin Park Keywell, which is meter and it's right here on Baldwin Park, on Clark, right behind, kind of like the show gas station on Main, and I'm sorry, Scott Place, one street just north of Los Angeles Street. Every Wednesday, they take a dip in there, they measure it, and that's how they come with the measurements that we get. And that's why they call it the Baldwin Park Keywell because it is in Baldwin Park, so that's kind of nice. However, it is dropping about four tenths of a foot each and every weekend. This rain or storm, whatever we got last week, it was kind of weird. Some areas got up to three inches of rain in a matter of an hour, some people got absolutely no rain. But I'm glad that Patty Chavez is here and also mentioned that the rebates have doubled and they asked about all of us going out there to the car washes and using them to provide, you know, to do our car washes. However, most of the car washes are grandfather and they don't have any recycled water, so she mentioned about the rebates and I was going to talk to Chain Chapman, the general manager, and Patty, please take this to the general manager that maybe if they can do some incentive to make it, because they use water, 99% of everything they use is pure water and it's flushed down the drain. So if we can have an incentive to turn around and recycle the water, it's going to help us out a lot. And unfortunately, I don't know if you heard, but most offenders, I'm glad the superintendent of the school district is here, we're getting complaints of what the city's doing and the schools, and they're really, you guys, and that's definitely the school district, they're our largest consumer of our water. So maybe a little tour, walk around the facilities and check for the sprinkler system because they are really wasting water and I think all of us have seen it. So we're asking for your support and the goal and objective is not to find anybody, but as was mentioned, to educate everyone. So thank you very much for listening to us and have a great evening.
Thank you very much. And you know what, out of curiosity, well, go ahead, I'll say it at the end, that's fine, thank you very much. Alright, our librarian, Mr. Rafael Gonzalez.
Gracias, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Lozano. Good evening, council members, elected staff, city staff. Yes, Rafael Gonzalez, Library Manager at the Baldwin Park Library. For the last 11 months, the Baldwin Park Library has been operating out of the community center. Thank you to you, Mayor Lozano, and council members, and especially Manny Carrillo and his staff. Well, today was the last day of service there and on Friday, we're going to have our staff from the county will come and we're going to be packing up all the materials from there, including dismantling the shelves and then furniture and taking the furniture and shelves to a salvage warehouse. And the materials will be carted to the Baldwin Park Library. Yes, we're getting ready to reopen Baldwin Park Library. And I don't have a date for you, I wish I did. Now we're told that it's going to be early September, we're thinking maybe the second after Labor Day. The library's coming out beautifully, I have to tell you. It just looks just beautiful, beautiful. There's a lot of roofing work that's still being done. The contractors are coming over and doing some final touches. There's furniture that needs to be delivered, there's still some digital equipment that needs to be delivered to the library, but the community is going to love the library, I have to tell you, Mayor Lozano and council members. But once again, I want to thank Manny Carrillo especially and your staff, they've been very collegial, friendly, very hospitable to us. This summer, we had our summer reading program there at the community center. It's, I mean, we work really close, I mean, our partnership was great, you know, we have a partnership with you, but this summer it was great. The day camp children, oh, they loved the programs that we had. We had eight programs, eight special programs with professional performers and, you know, we had attendances of over 100 in most of our programs. We ended our summer reading program on the last Saturday, on the third, and we had close to 100 people there as well. Thanks to the friends of the Baldwin Park Library that paid for some of the programs and also for the refreshments that we served on that, at the end of our summer reading program party. So as I said, now we're getting ready to go back to the, you know, to Baldwin Park Library, soon to reopen. You know, we're really excited and you'll hear about it. You'll get, you know, an official notice from our administration. So thank you very much and thank you once again for all the support that you've offered the Baldwin Park Library during these times so that our library is going to refurbishment. Thank you.
Thank you, Rafael, I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Mr. Luna.
Hello, city council. I'm Mr. Luna. Now that we have everybody in place up here, let's correct what was done by the old city council, let's change things. Let's start working for the city of Baldwin Park. That means 75,000 or however many there is. There's no excuse now that you cannot take care of the city of Baldwin Park. We have a new, okay, hold on, I lost my track. We have you all filled in. Two weeks, we have another city council meeting. We expect for all of you to come up with something for this water thing. I suggest that they get these 55-gallon water drums so people can use that water that they, you turn on the shower, everybody waits for the hot water unless you have the new system up. If you don't, you have to wait for the hot water to come out. Everybody can roughly save that water, use it for your garden, that's what I do. Everybody in our house that takes a shower has to run that water somewhere. We put it in a pail, I dump it in the yard. That saves me and water from watering all the extra that I have to do. I think everybody should be doing that unless you have waterless heater and then you can just have water, hot water all the time. On your agenda, item number five, we have a new code enforcer, it's full-time now. He should be doing this instead of us paying somebody $52,000, $30,000, or whatever we pay him, he should be doing that. We have a city manager, CEO, whatever you gentleman title you gave him. I think now that he's there, he should be telling all these departments that he so claimed run to take care of business. It doesn't look like we're doing, taking care of business. City council, I was asked the other day, where's the street sweeper? What was my answer to that person? Call the city council, ask them what they did with the money or what are they going to do with it? I suggested, and you have suggested, go to another city, find out what they do, find out what other people do. If you can't have somebody by the next meeting to clean our streets every week, I want my money refunded. I don't know about you people, but I want it refunded. If you don't mind giving the city money that you don't have to, fine. I'm pretty sure you all can hear me and all the people that are here, they would like their refund also. This is a government by the people. That means that when you can't do something and you can't do it year-round, it's time to give that money back. I know you guys think you're the federal government, but you're not. You're a lot easier to get a hold of than the federal government. So I suggest you people.
Alright, thank you. Time's up. Sorry about that.
Two minutes, Jesus.
Okay, here comes George from Baldwin Park Grill.
Good evening, George. Council members and mayor. The reason why I'm here, I just wanted to bring a matter to your attention that maybe be given consideration for all new businesses, just not myself. But when I first opened at Baldwin Park Grill after Juan's restaurante, I remember the patrons saying, gee, we didn't know you were open. We couldn't tell you were open. Even though I had an open sign, we couldn't tell. I have a little flashing open sign, they still couldn't tell. So I had a professional company put up some banners and professionally done and I had them placed on my building on all three sides. Due to the fact that my building is huge, I have to have all this, you know, put up there in order for people to see. And I noticed the reactions from people, oh, you're open. Because when I present myself to people and meet the people, I ask them, how did you hear about us? Some people say, oh, my friends are here. Some people say, oh, we finally noticed you finally opened because they saw these banners. And also including these flags. Now, I know it can become a junky city having a whole bunch of flags and banners and this and that, but when they're professionally, you know, completed and done and properly placed on a building for a short period of time, it can really help a new business. Now, my center and where I'm located, let's be honest, it's a dead center and I'm living under the shadow of Juan's restaurante being closed three days a week and opening up at noon. And because of that, people are not aware. Now, I had these three banners up and I had my flags up and code enforcement came and, you know, took some pictures and told me, hey, they have to be removed. So I'm asking you to take into consideration for new businesses, not only me, but America's Taco and some other businesses that are not seen, that maybe there should be a moratorium and some give and take for these new businesses to allow themselves to advertise, to get out there and show, is providing that it's clean and neat and appropriate for the city for six months to a year without getting hit with fees, penalties, fines, providing that they, you know, follow the rules of the city and be positive in such a positive way and is not ratty or torn apart and that they're taken down appropriately and then put up appropriately and so forth. So I just kind of wanted to bring this to your attention because this is what I'm facing because now I pulled everything down, I wondered, hmm, are they going to know I'm open or closed again? So I just wanted to bring this to your attention and the fact of the matter that, yeah, you might have a storefront that only has one facing, so they can only fit one banner, that applies to that building. But my building, my building faces east, north, and south, and west, but I only allocate for the north, south, and east area. And I'm asking for some special type of provision to allow me to keep my banners up at least six months, providing that they're neat, clean, and so that will help me and help the center get noticed that we are open. Because people do not notice that I am open unless I have something out there or somebody waving a sign or something.
Sorry, your time's up.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much and I'll address that at the end of the public communication. Alright, good evening. Mr. Rios, good evening.
Good evening. Been nice to you guys for the past month.
Hey.
I've noticed in the paper and I've noticed that Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Mrs. Garcia, you guys are trying to take credit for the stuff that the new council is doing. The old council, Mrs. Rubio, Mr. Pacheco would suggest some, the three of you would put them down. The budget, Mr. Grace did a beautiful job. It was in oak this thick, it was nice and simple, came out where it belonged to. He didn't try to cover everything up, you know. So let's, let's give credit where credit is due, okay? My point of view is the new council is doing it, okay? Mrs. Baca, Mrs. Rubio, Mr. Pacheco, yes, they're doing a beautiful job, okay? We have a new city manager. He promised me yesterday he's going to make three times as better as the old one and I believe him. He's already, what I've seen and what I've heard from him, he's already doing it, okay? We have a new chief, which is, he should have been there five years ago, you know. The police department is still doing good, okay? A year ago, this time, everybody was thinking, sheriffs, sheriffs. That's when the citizens started saying, hey, wait a minute, wait a minute, we need our own police department. That was the old council. The new council, they understand what the people want. So from now on, let's think as the new council, let's not think as the old council. Well, right now, that's all I have. Dan, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. All right, move along with public communication.
My name is Amanda Serrato, longtime resident of Baldwin Park.
Oh, Ms. Serratos, I haven't seen you in a while.
Right. And I wanted to add to what Rafael had to say, or I should say the library manager, which is his proper title, uh, that Mr. Carrillo has allowed us, the Friends of the Library, to meet there for the, since, um, September last year. And they went out of their way to, uh, take care of our needs and, and be able to carry out our business. Thank you very much. We really appreciated that. And thanks, council. I also have another concern. In walking around the streets or driving around, I notice that there are a lot of lawns, the city side of properties that are dead and dry. And considering the water situation, they would be okay. What is not okay is that many of them are very dirty, there is a lot of trash. And I wonder who is in charge of that? Or what is the city doing about that? Who is responsible to keep that side of my property, for instance? Mine is clean, but others are not, very trashy, and it makes the city look pretty bad in some areas. Who is responsible for that?
That would be code enforcement that would do, that, we could also call in some of the addresses and we'll get out there. I know they're enforcing that, there's literally hundreds of homes that are that way as well.
There is a particular area that is close to my light, on Calais and Main, no, Calais and Baldwin Park Boulevard, um, south and north, and very trashy. So do I need to call somebody?
Once you're finished, we'll come up here, we'll get your, the address.
All right.
All right, thank you, Ms. Serrato, nice to see you.
Thank you, nice to see you.
Thank you very much. I'm moving along with public communication. Hey, Margarita, good evening.
Margarita Vargas, I just wanna tell, um, answer to Amanda. The other day, we went to the second floor to ask for the discount for the water, I mean, for the waste management, you know, for senior citizen. And they have formed there for code enforcement that you fill out and you don't have to put your name. And so that's the way they, they, they know, um, if you wanna say something about, you know, neighbors or something that have a lot of trash, or they don't keep their sidewalk. A lot of people think that the sidewalk is, uh, the responsibility of the city. But I found out that it's, it's the resident that has to take care of the sidewalk and the other part next to the sidewalk, you know? So maybe in the now, they can put something about that, so people know that, that they're responsible. Okay, that's all, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Good evening, Ms. Taro.
Good evening, council. Uh, it's been a while, so I'm a little rusty. So, uh, first of all, I'd like to thank Dan Wall for all his help that he's done. Whenever you make a phone call, I get a response and he, and he makes a very good effort to take care of things. I thank Craig Graves for his budget. I didn't get to do that at one of the council meetings, but very simple and easy to read. Even all the council members understood at this time, so it was pretty good. And then I wanna welcome, uh, our new city manager. I'm sure he's gonna do good, he's a breath of fresh air. And I'll tell you something, I dig up dirt and I can't find a thing on you, buddy. I don't know how you did it over in West Covina, but you are clean. And I'm very proud that you are our city manager, and I hope this is new things to come in government. Um, now, that's the good part. Let's get on to the other part. First of all, with this, with all these lawsuits coming up and everything else, and I heard over, because I do listen to the audio, so I keep up. Um, Monica, our councilwoman, says that, um, Shannon wasn't picked on the right way, that we should have done a firm that came in and did it. Well, she seems to forget how Hassel was picked. She seems to forget how Vijay was picked. It, it seems that if it's not for your side, then it's not, then it's not okay. And we know that Hassel wasn't qualified, she even said it in a Tribune, she wasn't qualified. I even told her that. Then we go into, Monica brings in her friend from the finance director. She cooks the books. I serve her notice that she better straighten the books out or go. She left. She knew what she had done. And that is all due to your city manager. And all these poor little things, twenty things that Vijay says that he was pressured to do through Rubio and Pacheco, we all know that's a joke. We know the lady sitting over there in Baca's chair, Marlon Garcia, was the dictator. And it was a dictatorship here. This was not a democracy. And you people are siding with these people that are suing the city, abstaining and doing all the things you do, and it, it's, it's not cutting it. The people remember the falsifying of the budget, the, the police had no money, the city was in debt, you're gonna have to raise taxes, all this stuff came up, and you came in with the sheriff. Now you got egg on your face, because that's not what happened. We brought in a real budget, and we didn't have to wait almost a year for the last budget to get approved. And before that, the budget was, I believe, about six months. And then we had two books this thick that Vijay tried to doctor up so that nobody could figure out where it's at. But it's very easy. You people tried to make the police department look like the bad guys, when all in all, it was all, the Three Amigos is what you've been called. And it's not right. And you're not taking credit for what the new council's brought in of people and what they're trying to do. And Chief Taylor forgot to thank you for your night out deal and having your troops over there. And Jason's one hell of an organizer. He needs a lot of credit for what he did over there last night. It brought a lot of people to the city, I saw the mayor out there, Monica's nowhere to be seen. You know, you people need to understand, we're not forgetting who brought the city down. Just because you had that six million dollars in the pot, that didn't mean you did a good job. You fired a lot of people over that. You didn't run the city efficiently the right way, you kept the money and you let the city go down. Who had to call the county and tell them you had mold inside your air conditioning units and dripping down in the police locker room? You people weren't gonna fix it. You were gonna poison your own employees because you were gonna save money.
Ms. Taro, your three minutes-
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, move along with public communication, anyone else wishing to speak? Thank, Ms. Loris, how are you? I thank you.
I just wanna thank everyone on the council and my, and mayor. We had a wonderful time at concerts in the park. I really enjoy it. And we always make a little bit of money, which is what we wanna do. And the reason why I'm coming up here is I'm asking a favor. We are constantly doing fundraisers. And one of our fundraisers is a really easy one if you have Facebook. I can almost be certain that almost everybody up there has Facebook. If you do, please go into Angel Bin and like us. We will, if we are the most liked, we will get a hundred dollars. Yay for us. That's all I wanna say. Thank you.
What, what's the actual, uh, the actual Facebook?
Angel Bin.
Angel Bin.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else wishing to speak under public communication? Okay, if not, at this point, we're gonna go under, um, Consent Calendar, the legal council will be explaining the contract for Mr. Shen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to indicate that, uh, on item number six, it was intended that the compensation percentage between the city and the consultant include the registration fees as well as any fines from the program. That was a typographical modification that was included in the contract, so now it reads registration fees and penalties. In addition, there was also a typographical error regarding the, um, Baldwin Park Municipal Code, and that was changed from one fifty point oh-two-nine to one fifty point two-five-oh. And those have been incorporated into the contract.
All right, thank you very much.
Mayor, are we now moving on to the consent calendar?
No, not yet.
Oh.
It'll be there right now. So at this point, do we need a motion for that, or is that, we're just, that's, all right, thank you, legal council. At this point, I want to go ahead and go into the consent calendar. And we have items, uh, one through eight, and council members wishing to pull any item?
Yes, I'd like to pull item number three, please.
Number three, council member?
And I'd like to pull item number six.
All right, number six. All right, anyone else? Okay, if not, at this point, I'm going to go ahead and entertain a motion for consent calendar, with the exception of items three and six, that is my motion.
And a second?
Second, by council member Susan Rubio, at this point, the objections, see none, so move. This point, item number three, uh, which is requested by council member Cruz Baca, authorize an agreement for professional services for Walnut Creek Nature Park. Or it's council member Monica Garcia, all right, thank you.
Thank you, mayor. I just wanted to pull this item to really highlight, uh, the work of our Recreation and Community Services Department under the leadership of Manny Carrillo and, um, working with Monica Kealan and several staff. I, I know that they've been working really hard to think outside the box, working with environmental groups over the last couple of years. And going out and finding, um, you know, funding, and none of the funding is coming from our general fund or from any monies that we have currently. Uh, we were able to get a significant grant from Supervisor Gloria Molina's office. We were also, we got some commitments from the environmental groups and also from the Upper San Gabriel Valley Water District. So this has been a wonderful project to, you know, see come to fruition. And, um, now we're about to award a contract for conceptual design of Walnut Creek Park. And this is to restore, uh, the beautiful park, the gem that it is. And, um, you know, this is a park that we've had in our city, but why not have it be a regional asset as well? And so with that focus, I, I think that, you know, we are selecting the right, the right group. And, uh, definitely wanna thank, um, you know, Manny and, and everybody who's been part of this. Thank you so much for all of your work. And with that, I'd like to move to approve this item.
All right, thank you. At this point, we'll, uh, second, any objections? See none, so move. At this point, council member Cruz Baca requesting the item six, which is approval of agreement with, uh, Neflix Cortez, DBA, Nationwide Cost Recovery Services for Assistance in Abandoned Properties Registration Program.
I would like to pull that for further review until, um, September.
All right.
Uh, so that I can, we can take a look at all of that contract. That's new to me. And, um, there were some changes, and I'd really like to take a look at that.
All right. Okay, so at this point, there is second for that?
I'll second.
Second, any objections? I see none, so move. All right, thank you very much. All right, we'll go over to the public hearing, which we, first one, item number nine is the public hearing of the city council to adopt a resolution and the city's two thousand fourteen congestion management program, a local implementation report. And it's the Honorable Amy Harben.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, council members, members of the audience. This is a yearly item that comes before you about the same time every year as required by MTA for the city's self-certification with the congestion management program pursuant to Government Code six-five-zero-eight-nine. Um, in the report, we've attached the local implementation report, which shows the city's development activity as well as demolition activity between the period of June first, two thousand thirteen, through May thirty-first of two thousand fourteen. All development sectors, including commercial, residential, and industrial are included with this. The city's balance is actually the new development that we have minus any demolitions that occurred during the planning period. Um, as state law requires, this does require a public hearing. So at this time, staff is recommending that the city council open the public hearing, receive any public comment, close the public hearing, and adopt Resolution two thousand fourteen dash zero twenty-seven entitled Resolution of the City of Baldwin Park, Finding the City to Be in Conformance with the Congestion Management Program in Adopting, in Adopting the CMP Local Development Report in accordance with California Government Code six-five-zero-eight-nine. And this concludes staff's presentation.
All right, thank you very much. At this point, council members have any questions? Okay, if not, at this, at this point, I'm gonna go ahead and open up here the public hearing. So anyone wishing to speak in favor, I'll take those at this point. Anyone opposing? Okay, see no interest, and now declare the public hearing closed. Uh, council members, have any questions? If not, at this point, I'll make a motion, a resolution of the Baldwin Park City, uh, City of Baldwin Park, Finding the City to Be in Conformance with the Congestion Management Program CMP and Adopting the CMP Local Development Report in accordance with the California Government Code section six-five-zero-eight-nine. That is my motion.
I'll second.
Second, any objections? See none, so move. All right, the last, we have, uh, the communications, we have, uh, Mayor Protem, Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco, for discussion direction to staff on the following, uh, this, Vice, where's the, where's the Vice Mayor? Oh, the restroom, okay. Is there a speaker in there? No, I'm just kidding. All right, so we'll get, we'll get him out here real quick, so. Oh, yeah, let's go ahead and go over to the, uh, one for council member, excuse me, council member Susan Rubio, uh, which is also discussion direction for staff. Council member, thank you.
Yes, thank you, mayor. Uh, one of the things that I would like to, to ask for support is to direct staff to, to begin conceptual designs for a park civic center plaza across City Hall. Um, I know that, uh, considering the surround, the surrounding cities, we are one of the most park poor cities in this region. Uh, we're six point seven square miles and we hardly have any open space. And this, um, area has been identified by the Arroyo Group who has been doing our specific plan. And so I would like to get ahead on, on that and start seeing what the potential is for a civic center across the street. Um, I mean, there's a lot of reasons why I think this would be good for our community. First of all, I think we're also one of the only cities that don't have an open park plaza civic center, and that would really help the aesthetics of our community. And I would also like for it to be a place where families can come and hang out and potentially, um, have some kind of platform to bring entertainment. I know that it is very visible from the metro station, and one of my goals or hopes would be to spark interest in new businesses to come to the downtown area. So I would like to, um, direct, uh, our staff to go ahead and, and see if we can have some conceptual designs with our pre-approved designers. I know that, uh, it takes money, so one of the things that I would like to request is that we also begin looking for, for sources of funding. I know that our supervisors have been very generous in the past, and I had a, a conversation with our old and new elected supervisor, and they've always been very open, and one of their, their goals is to continue to provide trees and, and, um, and help our, our city. So please look into that as well as the environmental groups. And I know that through being a Tree City USA, there's a lot of grants available for parks. And so I wanna really go after this. I think it would really be good for our community. Um, going back to our Baldwin Park Grill, you know, I had a discussion with him, and, and he's right. He sits there in a lonely corner, corner, and there's hardly any foot traffic. And that's one of the things that I hope that we can fix. We need to bring people to the downtown area, so we have people noticing his, uh, his business. And so the second request that goes with that is our second bullet point, which is I would like to direct staff to start lighting up Main Street. The way we lit up Superior Shopping Center, which we can, I think we can all agree that it's doing pretty well and aesthetically, I mean, it looks beautiful, and so I wanna continue that. So now, let's go outside the shopping center into our main street, which is maybe light up every palm tree or every other palm tree. And if you can bring us back, you know, just an idea of how we can do that, that would be great. Starting from Ramona all the way to his business, which is Clark, I believe, correct? And, uh, I also talked to some of the owners of some of the, um, those, um, those lots. And, uh, they were really excited, particularly, you know, where Fallas Paderes is, it's a big shopping center. And I usually, when I drive by there and I see how empty it is, um, I really do believe that that's our downtown. And when I spoke to him about some of the ideas I had, he said he would be very interested in developing that shopping center and making a couple of, uh, making the front. You know, now we have the back, which is where all the stores are, that's why I think sometimes we don't get enough traffic for BP Grill. He said we'd be inclined to possibly redesign it, to bring the stores in the front and parking in the back, and work with us to make that a really booming, you know, shopping center. And so that goes with the, the lighting. Um, just to share with you, last council meeting, I requested to start thinking about a farmer's market. So I met with a group of people, including CCPHA, which is California Center for Public Health Advocacy, and we talked about all the possibilities, the pros and the cons. I know we had a farmer's market ten years ago and it didn't do very well. So we talked about the reasons why it didn't do well, and we really, uh, worked on making it better. So we have a preliminary plan, so to speak, and, uh, I, I don't wanna move forward until the council decides that you're on board with this. Um, I think it has a potential, once again, to bring people to downtown. We were thinking of possibly having it three weeks, just to see how, how it works. I know that you don't wanna do it every week for, for four months or whatever, because then it's too big. So we wanna try maybe three weeks, starting in September. Um, and again, once again, the interest is just to have people come, walk our city, uh, get some excitement going in this downtown. And the group that I met with, you know, I'm gonna call it our little committee, they all had great ideas, and we really brainstormed, and I really want the support of the council to allow us to move forward with this. And so I wanna direct staff to put a plan together. Um, I know we have like Manny Carrillo, who has institutional knowledge. He worked back in the days when it wasn't successful, and he can definitely help us through the kinks, why it didn't work and how we can- the kinks, why it didn't work and how we can really make it way better. So anyhow, so those three requests is, you know, to start the conceptual design on, across civic, I'm sorry, across City Hall, light up Main Street and allow us to begin planning for the farmer's market. And Manny Carillo, if you can bring back a plan to the next council meeting, which is, I think, the 20th, and, and we can share with the entire council and see if we can move forward with it. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Susan Rubio. All right, at this point, we'll go ahead and go to Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco's request. Thank you.
Yes, Mayor, I have a request and according to the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, Baldwin Park has an 11% unemployment rate that is higher than the state and national average of 7% and 6% respectively. In an effort to reduce the unemployment rate for financially burdened families in Baldwin Park and offer no cost or affordable job training programs, I am requesting the City Council direct staff to begin research on funding, on funding and possible locations for a work source center to be located in Baldwin Park and draft a letter in support to our state legislators and congressional elected officials. And I had staff put together a, a letter of support that reads, during the past five years, a series of economic recessions, the city of Baldwin Park suffered the highest unemployment rate of the San Gabriel Valley, peaking at 16.5% in 2010. Most recently, while the state and county of Los Angeles are benefiting from the strength of the recovery and improved economic activity, the city of Baldwin Park is still lagging behind with a persistent double-digit unemployment rate of 10.2% by the, at the end of June 2014. For the past five years, the city has reduced its crime rate, organized job fairs, and focused on youth, educational and social programs, among others, to support the community. However, the lack of vocational training still remains a challenge, while the fastest growth in the county includes biomedical, home health, and construction. Residents of Baldwin Park do not have access to local training and educational facilities and these professional fields to provide critical assistance in preparing for and seeking long-term employment. If you all remember, the former alley work center in, in nearby Irwindale no longer receives WEA funding for the, and the commute to the existing work source center in Almonte is about 30 minutes away in Baldwin Park. So I want to really get the, the city council, I also work, talk to the superintendent, our new superintendent from Baldwin Park Unified School District to see if we could all work together to see what we can do to improve the unemployment training here in the city of Baldwin Park, whether it's for higher education or vocational training. I know that if you look at the utility companies in the water industry, there's a lot of positions to be filled. There's a number of certified water training individuals that are retiring and there's a shortage of workers in that area in the electrical companies. There's also a, a number of people retiring and there's also people to be filled in there in the gas companies, construction trades, in the medical field, just all around us, all the industries that are around us that need to have trained people to begin to take on those jobs. And because we have a lot of youth within the city of Baldwin Park, we need to start to train them. We need to have facilities that are closer to homes so that they could begin to take advantage of those types of opportunities that we have. And unless we all speak out from the congressional level, from our state level, and here at the local level, we won't be able to get the financing and the resources for, for that to happen. So along with that, I'm also have asked, I have another request is, in order to better, to, to address the needs, to better access the higher education and low unemployment in Baldwin Park and to better serve the community, I'd like to direct staff to meet with Mount SAC and to serve residents and community members. I need to bring a satellite campus to Baldwin Park. So over the past few months, I've met with the Baldwin Park School District representatives, two council members, the water district, some representatives from, from Mount SAC and, and Bassett School District to begin to talk about getting a facility for satellite campus here in Baldwin Park. And the location is still need to be determined, but I think we need to start to talk to Mount SAC to make sure that, you know, the campus opportunities that they have in Mount SAC and our surrounding colleges like Citrus and Roondo, that we have something more local here within Baldwin Park. You know, transportation costs are going up and if you're a student, you're not working, you know, all that takes a long time, even just, just to get to a, a local college around here is very difficult. You know, the bus lines that we have, which we need to look at it, you know, it takes more than an hour, I think, right now to get to Mount SAC, so, you know, plus the cost of going to college. And so all these opportunities, you know, we want to make sure that they're here in our backyard, that they're here in our city. I think we need to work with all the issues, with all the advantages that we have to bring the resources for our residents here to Baldwin Park. So I'm also asking our staff to work and do a survey of the community to see the interest that there is to bring these resources from Mount SAC here to our community.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco.
I would like to just add a little and
Sure.
I think I, I'm really happy to see that Councilmember Pacheco, I work very closely with the work source centers and have for the last 15 years through the private post-secondary schools where I work. And we need public support so that, as well as the school district, of course, because this is an incredible tool for, I know North, North Park is doing like a, a younger version of this, but we also need to reach out to a lot of our members of our commu, our community. The veterans, of course, I would like to be included in that. It's very, very important that they, that they are able to tap into some of the funds that are available to them through the work source centers. But the availability of having a work source center in our backyard is extremely important. They open up the doors for you to be able to apply directly to job opportunities and also for training, for career, reinventing yourself. If your place of employment has closed and you need to find a new career or to upgrade the career that you already have, these sources are there and they're funded for you. And it's very important for us, as the residents here in Baldwin Park, with like Councilmember Pacheco said, we have such a high rate of unemployment for our, for our residents and some of the people in our surrounding area to be able to tap into and take advantage of these resources that are there for us. So please, we need Ricardo Pacheco, Assembly, Assemblyman, Councilmember Pacheco needs your, your help as well as residents, please. This is something that's very important and we can all work together. Thank you.
I have a comment just on the, on the satellites for, for Mount SAC. I know it's very necessary and I know that throughout the years I've heard talk about the, the satellite, the only thing I would ask, I'm going back to my earlier request, is that, you know, I really be centrally located because I know that, you know, the intent is to educate our kids, you know, of course, we are, you know, I believe this entire council is very supportive of education, but it also has an unintended effect here where we need to have it centrally located because these kids eventually, or adults, will shop in our community. And I know that, like I said, in years past, I've heard talk about locations that are on the outskirts of Baldwin Park and sometimes that we do that, I feel like we would lose on that opportunity to capture some of the funding that, that that could bring to our community. So once again, the only thing I would ask is that we find something that's centrally located so the people that do attend can shop and eat in our community and that would bring a little bit more tax dollars to our community. Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Monica Garcia.
I actually want to just address some comments that were made earlier and just for the general public's sake, first of all, I wasn't here when VJ Single was appointed to CEO and I came in in 2007 and since I was on the city council, we always went out to executive search. And when we went to look for a, a chief of police, we did conduct a process and interviewed a number of individuals who, you know, we were very impressed with. We actually offered two individuals the position and they declined. And so after going through a search, we decided to look internally and so that's what led to the appointment of Lily Hadsole. However, you know, even if, even if those two individuals declined for, for their various reasons, I think it was, there's still something to be said for process and I just hope that moving forward, we will, you know, go through a, a, a public process. And I think that our CEO understands that as well and can appreciate, you know, that in most cities, when we do look for executive team members, that there is a process. Now, the, this idea that I was friends with Lorena Quijano, I'm not really sure why, you know, you want to make this up, but I thought she did a great job while she was here and I think that now Craig Graves is, is doing a great job. So I also want to point out that, you know, there is mention of the budget and a couple of things I wanted to point out, just so that nobody walks away from this meeting thinking that we were just, you know, trying to spread fear or there were any tactics. Just to give you an idea, last year, we worked on a deal that brought in a million dollars to the general fund. Another deal brought in 250,000. These are additional funds. And in this fiscal year, our budget, and actually, we reduced police positions temporarily, I hope. I think it was about eight positions, eight or nine positions. And even with that, we're looking at a surplus of about 100,000, 153,000. So I'll let you do the math and you can take from that what you may. But again, we brought in a million dollars in extra revenue last year, 250,000, and we're still, you know, I mean, 100,000 is not a whole lot to, to have as a surplus. And like I said, we did cut about eight, eight or nine police positions in this year. So that's something to consider and I just wanted to leave you with that. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Mayor, I just want to add one point that I feel I need to share. I know process can be defined in many different ways. Sometimes they're lengthy, sometimes they're shorter, but nonetheless, there was a process and just for clarification, there were interviews and I felt at that time unanimously, we all felt that the person we picked was the, the best fit for Baldwin Park and that the right fit for our community. So again, just to clarify, I guess, we can all have different definitions of what process is, but there were interviews conducted and that's how we ended up with the best man for the job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, just to add that the, last, last year, going back to the budget of, of last year, the information that we got that we had a huge deficit came from the CEO at that time and his letters that he wrote in the, in the budget summary that he had. And that's where we had the information about a deficit and why these personnel changes had to be made, including going to the sheriff. So there was information that there was a huge deficit. Now, now today, I think, or if our finance director could probably tell us, we have, how much do we have in our reserve today? Okay, so we have about 6.3 million, but that information wasn't shared last time. So that's kind of the, the issues that we had with what, how much money do we have in our budget to make decisions that we had to make at that time. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much, Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco. Just for, just for the record, as is mentioned here, that VJ came under this, the current council majority? No, it came, I was part of the minority at the time. It was Councilmember David Olivas, it was Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco, and it's Councilmember Bill Van Cleve. They brought in VJ and I'll tell you, I had major disagreements with VJ when he first got hired, but at the end of the day, and at the end of this term, that man brought in $6 million, which we're seeing here now. So on that, I gotta, even though I disagreed with the colleagues at the time, I just want to make sure it's set in the record where VJ was come, not through the, the biggest majority, so.
But Mayor, but you did vote for him.
Yeah, well, you know what? Ultimately, I can't, did I?
Yeah. It was all five of us voted for him.
All right, but that was brought by, by, by the council majority at the time, even though you and I knew that both of you and I were
The whole council came in as a majority, voted for him at the time.
Yeah, but I just want, I just want, so just for the record, so it's set, so that we know that there's no confusing there. Okay.
Mayor, just one thing, I just, I'm going to go away from that conversation, just really quick, going back to my request. I just want to make sure, you know, because I, I stated what I wanted, you know, the, the farmer's market and all that, but I didn't really hear, you know, I just want to make sure the council's on board to make sure that it's clear that we're moving forward with my three requests.
Yes, but, you know, I would like so that that way we're not, I would like to, is, is there some way or is it all right for us to pick up an approximate date of when we would like to have the first farmer's market so that that way we have something, something planned or something to look forward to?
Well, now that you've given us permission, permission to move forward, we're going to meet with our little group that offered to help and some of the people that were interested in participating this coming week. So we want to put together a plan, so we were thinking three weeks, the last week, I'm sorry, the last two weeks in September and the first week in August. Manny, you want to add to that? I had the discussion with Manny, he was one of the people that joined me at the table.
Yes, we, we will present a plan of action to the city council for their consideration at the next council meeting, which I believe is August 20th, and we are hoping to have the event on Thursdays, the last two Thursdays in September and the first Thursday in October. So we are proposing to give it a shot for three weeks and then to reevaluate it and bring it back to council for further discussion.
And one of the reasons that we wanted to, to really be mindful of what's going on in our surrounding, we met with CCPHA and they were under a grant and they have been doing a lot of work for our community for healthy eating, healthy living, trying to, to eliminate obesity, things like that. And so they were one of our partners that sat at the table and their grant is gone and they're trying to look for funding to continue to work in our community. And they said that one of the elements that they were missing was a farmer's market and so some of the ideas that we talked about, in order for them to seek out grants, is to add diversity to our, our farmer's market, for example, have a cultural day so to make sure that we're not just catering to one group in our community, but everyone's welcome, everyone's invited. So again, we did it for a lot of reasons, and once again, to spark interest with our businesses, but also we really want to make sure that, you know, they stay in our community. We're talking about our health advocacy group, they were, they've been partners with us for 10 years and we really want to help them be able to seek out grants. And once again, the only purpose for them being here is to benefit our community, so. But I would say bring it back on the 20th, just for the community, we were just exploring ideas and yes, well, we were talking about the last two weeks in September and the first week of August, three weeks. Thank you.
All right.
Mayor, just one more point of clarification is, last year, there, there was no cut in police officers. We have as many police officers last year as we have this year, so there, there wasn't any cut. As a matter of fact, I think we're, we're having two more officers added because we're going, they're having, they're graduated from their academy, is that correct? Four officers that we picked up. How, how many more officers do we have?
Are we at 62 currently or what? Were we at 60?
Ah, there we go, there we go. We just recently gave conditional job offers to new, two new police officers that are laterals so they can be put into service right away. And we have two in the academy that'll be graduating next month, I believe. So we'll be up by four. They'll be in training for a while, so that'll take a little bit of time, so we'll have four coming on board.
Okay, so the level of officers has pretty much stayed the same as
Stayed the same because we've got another officer that's retiring here within, within a month and we have a couple of officers that are injured right now, so it stays the same.
Who, who's returning, Mike?
Uh, that will be Randy Morris.
Oh, wow, okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
Yes, okay, thank you, yes. Yeah, Councilmember Monica Garcia, hold on, hold on.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and then, then we'll pass it over. And again, you know, we could be here all night talking about this, but, but when we talk about funding positions, we have to allocate a certain amount of our budget to police positions. And last year, it was at 78? Last fiscal year? The fund, the funded positions?
Two years ago, you allocated funds for 71 positions, or 70. This, a year ago, the budget we adopted mid-year had approval for 69 positions. This year, you have funding for 70.
Okay, but in the past, when we had projected for the, you know, for that, the year, we would, we would fund six, I think it was 78 positions.
70, well, you, up until this past year, you, you had an authorization of 77 positions.
77, thank you. So the point that I'm making here is that in the past, when we would project for the next fiscal year, we would allocate funding for 77 positions. And, you know, those positions were not all filled, but we still have to allocate it from the budget. And so that would create, you know, some holes in our budget. We didn't reduce the positions because our police department was telling us that they were already underfunded and so we didn't reduce any of those, those positions. In this fiscal year, we have temporarily reduced the funded positions to about, from 77 to about 69?
No, there, you, you have funding for 70 positions, but part of that is based on the fact that you're probably going to have a vacancy factor this year of 10 to 12%. And that was the basis of, of, of the, of the projected expenses is that we just didn't see any way that we were going to get much above 70 positions
Right.
at the time of the budget. see any way that we were going to get much above 70 positions at the time of the budget because at that point, we had, actually had 62 officers, two in the academy, and, and you're looking at a year to year and a half to recruit an officer. And so based on those projections, we felt that the best that we could do would be to get to potentially 70 positions with the current, current recruitment calendar. And the fact that we may now be, in a month from now, at 65, is probably the highest we've had in the 14 months I've been here. When I came, you had actually 58 positions. So, the reason was not necessarily not to fund them as much as an estimate based on what we actually felt that we would have positions that would be able to be filled.
Right. Well, I mean, I think the reason, the policy direction that we took in the past was, the recommended ratio, as pointed out by our police department and other police agencies, is one officer per 1,000 residents. And so our population is 75,000, so again, going back to what the police department was telling us, we were already underfunded, we were allocating 77 funded positions, okay? We were setting aside money for 77 funded positions. Now whether we were able to fill those positions or not, you're right, that is another story. And, you know, still a challenge, but I'm glad that we're moving forward in filling those positions. Nevertheless, we were tell, we were being told by our police department, 77 positions, we don't want to go anything below 75 because again, the recommended ratio is one officer per 1,000 residents. So that's why we stayed with the allocation that we had. Now, it's a, it's a different story, but, you know, we've redo, we temporarily reduced the funding to about 70 positions and there has been a cost savings of about $800,000 on the front end. So I just wanted to point out that that is a savings and that is something to consider. You know, when we were talking about this years ago, there was a logic to it. It wasn't just that we were trying to scare the public, it wasn't that we were, it was, there was a logic to it and a lot of it was coming from our police department saying, we can't, we can't afford to, to reduce any positions, whether they're filled or not. And so now here we are, and that's okay, we've all approved this budget. And, you know, it's a temporary reduction, I hope, and moving forward, we'll, we'll adjust accordingly. I'm glad that we are filling some of the positions. I just wanted to clarify for the audience, the general audience, what the discrepancy of information is that you're hearing.
But I would also like to clarify that at one time, and a lot of the people that are here, and maybe some of the ones that are even listening, that those positions were put there because some of us believed that it was to inflate the police budget so that at that point, there would be some type of justification as to why you wanted to get rid of them.
Well, previously, so previously, there were 81 police positions that were funded. And then there was a reduction to the 77 and, and I had heard some of the people here in this audience and some of our folks from the police department, that they were not very happy with that reduction. So no, we didn't inflate, we actually reduced from 81 to 77. Now we're at 70 and there is a cost savings there and that's all I wanted to point out. We weren't just coming up with numbers out of a hat, there was logic to it and it was based on a conversation that was taking place at the time, on this dais, with the audience and mostly with the police department.
Well, whatever logic there was, I will stick to what I have heard from many of the constituents and what I felt myself, is that those 77 positions were never intended to be filled. They were there because it was to show that the budget was extremely, extremely being controlled by the police department and that the city was losing money with our PD.
All right, yes, Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco, go ahead.
Last year, Councilmember, you were in the position of eliminating the police department in favor of the sheriff's department. You were not going to hire 77 or any officers, they were all going to be gone. I mean, that was your position as of last year and, and these, the budget was shown to show that there was, you know, more officers that were going to cost us more money. I mean, that's what, I, I sat here one day and I, I put up my spreadsheet and I showed that, how the budget was inaccurate. You never reached those 70, 77 officers because there's always this attrition factors and people that resign or retire, so you're, we're always at this level for years, at about 70, but it, it never reaches that point. So, the, the number that we have there was because of the attrition factor that, that has been going on. But in your position, you were to, and tell, correct me if I'm wrong, but you wanted to go with the sheriff's department because in your view, there was a savings for there, not that you wanted to add more officers at that time.
Well, the, the discussion at the time was that we were considering an alternative, what was it, a proposal from the sheriff's department. Now, as you know, we never took a vote on that proposal, but we did, we did take it to the next phase so that we could understand, you know, what the, what the assets were, what we were, what the real numbers were. We never got to that point. But again, going back to the conversation we were having at the time, we were working with a police department who was saying they were underfunded, we were funding them at the 77 positions. You know, there was question as to whether the police department was funded adequately. And then we were also dealing with some serious deficit issues based on the recession, okay? And, I mean, there's a whole, you know, there are different factors, obviously, into that conversation, but it was, it was a, a different analysis that was, you know, being conducted based on a different conversation that was, that was being had, including by our police department. You know, at the time, the police department was saying, we, we can't, we don't want any cuts, you know, to, as far as funding. We are not willing to pay into our pension, we are not. So I think that we're now having a different discussion is what I'm hearing. You know, the police department has now, and with Chief Mike Taylor, has now said, we will temporarily reduce these positions to help with the, with the, with the deficit. And we will, you know, perhaps will contribute in other ways, I don't know. But without that savings, without that $800,000 savings, we would have had a deficit here for this next fiscal year of about, at least, what, $600,000 or $700,000? So what, the point that I'm making here is that, you know, the conversation that we were having, we've been told that, you know, we were just kind of coming up with numbers out of a hat and this and that. There was some, there was reason, you know, there was logic and, you know, but now we're here. We're here and we are moving forward with a new budget. I just wanted to explain the differences.
Oh, but Councilman, if I may, you, you last year were going in favor of the sheriffs. I mean, that's just plain and simple, there's no middle ground. You wanted to get the sheriffs because you believed that was a savings. My position was, the police budget was padded, there was a lot of numbers and a lot of other budgets that were put into there. You had, you know, the animal shelter, you had all kinds of stuff in there that didn't belong there and that really built it up to like $25 million or whatever number that was. That was not a true representation of the budget at that time because you were in view of, let's eliminate our police department. And that was your position. I mean, it was pretty plain and simple and I'll look back at the records and find quotes from you that had said that was your position. You voted for it the first time to have, to do the first study, and you voted for it, it was three to two, and you were in favor of it, and then everything after that, took after that, you were in favor of going to get rid of the sheriff, I mean, go with the sheriffs and get rid of our department. I mean, there was no position you took. You say that there was no votes? There was plenty of votes, there was plenty of decisions that were made that you said that. And I mean, I want, I know it's the past, it's the history, we're going to move on from here, but I just want to state that because you're trying to confuse the issue of 77 officers or if we had 70 and how all that conversation took place, all right? That's the point I'm trying to make. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not trying to confuse.
Mayor, if I may, please?
Hold on, no, hold on, Councilmember hasn't, hold on, go ahead.
I'm sorry, it's because we're having this conversation back and forth. I'm not trying to confuse any of the numbers. And yes, I did vote to move to the phase, the second phase in considering a proposal from the sheriff's department. And I was in favor of putting the vote out to the residents. So I don't want to confuse that either. What I'm simply trying to say is that, in the past, we had 77 police positions that were funded. Our police department was adamant about funding at the recommended ratios. And fast forward to where we are today, our police department is saying, you know what? We understand, we'll, we'll go along with the police reductions for 70 positions and there is a cost savings associated with that. And it's about an $800,000 cost savings. If we didn't have that and considering the surplus that we have, which is about 125,000, we would actually be in the deficit again. So what I'm trying to say here is, we weren't just coming up with numbers just, you know, out of our hat in the past. There was a logical process and that's all, I repeated myself enough this evening, so I don't need to say anymore.
And Mr. Mayor, because these items were not agendized, I think maybe...
Yeah, and then we have closed session, so let me, let me just end, let me just end by, by saying this, so that this way we could all kind of come together, because I know we agree to disagree. I want to sing "Happy Birthday" to Cruz Baca, okay? So on the count of three, okay? One, two, three.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Cruz. Happy birthday to you. All right.
Mayor, I still have something to say.
All right, yes, go ahead.
Okay, I, I just want to say, I'm sitting here listening to all of you council members, with all due respect, I appreciate everybody's comments. It is August 6, 2014, it's today, we need to leave the past behind, whatever happened, it's been taken care of, we're moving forward. We have Shannon as our new CEO, I would like to see the city moving forward, working together and not pointing fingers, you said this, you said that, you voted for this, you didn't vote for that. That's already in the past. As a, as council, working for the community, I believe you should work together and, and move forward. Let's not point any more fingers, move forward, let's make this a good community. Welcome, Shannon, I know we're going to move forward so we can all work together. Also, I want to welcome our new superintendent, Paul. Thank you, I already see a big difference, you being involved in the community, being part of the walk yesterday. Thank you and I look forward to working with you. And can we just all get along and be happy? Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Real quick, and well, and before we forget, we could, Shannon, we could work with George on the Ballpark Grill, let's do some, because I don't want to see him close his doors as they don't the other businesses, so let's make some type of exception, probably have to come and change an ordinance or something, but it's, please do that, okay?
What I would suggest, if we could bring back that ordinance, that ban of ordinance that everyone complains about, either to ban it next, next meeting or revise it or something.
Okay, correct, what Vice Mayor, makes sense.
He's not the only business owner that does that. And also, Mayor, just like to add that, I had a letter of support for, to bring the, you know, the WorkSource Center here to Ballpark, all the council members signed it, so we're all working together to move forward on this and we're going to all meet with our legislators and encourage the funding comeback for our city.
Let's do it.
We're moving forward.
All right, thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, we are moving to closed session, so it's important for the public to know that if they want to wait, we will have to, we will be reporting out something if, if anything, but they can't wait to, for that reporting.
So at this point, I'm going to move to close the city council meeting. Motion? Any objections? So move, Viva Ballpark, good evening, everyone.
How long is your meeting going to be?
Let's go in there quick, because I want to be out here before 11:30.
Okay, I'll be very quick.
Where's Mr. Albright?
I thought titles are here.
Oh, I thought he did, okay. All right, let's go in there.
I was looking on another spreadsheet. God, I cleaned out all my stuff here.